Are we recording? I'm so used to see that recording thing. Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming to the City of Watsonville City Council meeting. We will be starting with closed session. It is Tuesday, February 22 at 5:00 p.m. If you've forgotten your masks, there are masks right here by the podium for your convenience. We have started with closed session. So is there anyone from the public here who would like to address closed session? Door was open when I came in. Literally, I just came in like five minutes ago with Vanessa. Door was open, yeah. Maybe it was the other door.
Five oh four, so if you came in five minutes ago, you're 04:54.
And it was open?
It was open.
Okay. Okay, so we'll wait to make sure that any of the public that is outside the door that locked at 5:00. Is there anyone out there? Fabulous. We'll move on then, since there are no comments from or questions on the closed session agenda from the public. We will be back here at 6:30 to continue our public meeting. City council meeting here Tuesday, February 22 at 5:00 p.m. Oh, wait, at 6:30 p.m. now. We finished our closed session. We'll start with roll call. Dutra?
Here.
Estrada?
Present.
Garcia? Hurst?
Here.
Montesino?
Here.
Kiros Carter? Parker? Here. As we have no reason to excuse any absent council, all council members are here. We will continue with our pledge of allegiance. And Teacher Me will do that tonight, so if you'd please stand.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Information items, we have a report of dispersments. I don't know if the city council has any questions on that, and I hope you had time to look it over. We have also miscellaneous document reports. Are there any questions in regards to that? And I hope you had time to look it over. And if there are written reports by council members regarding actions taken on the regional commissions or boards that may affect the city, if any, I hope you've had time to review those. Before we go any further, I'd like to refer to our city attorney for a report out of closed session.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was no reportable action this evening in closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. This time is set aside. We're going to do presentations and oral communications for the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented except that any council member may respond to the statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions by clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to the staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification and reports. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and the district in which they live in in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. We will begin with any oral communications from the public. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor Parker, members of the council. My name is Murray Fontz. I'm a principal engineer in the Public Works and Utilities Department, and I want to wish you a happy Engineers Week.
All right.
And if it's Engineers Week in Watsonville, that means there's an egg drop competition coming up.
All right.
You are invited to tomorrow's competition. It begins at 3:30. It will take place in the alley next to the post office. Next slide, please. The challenge of the egg drop is to create a device that can hold an egg and allow it to be dropped 60 feet without breaking. Traditionally, the participants have included lots of young people from the city's engineering science workshop and library programs, as well as the public and the city's engineering staff. It's also a time for lots of foul jokes. People think they're comedic hens, but I'm letting those jokes slide this year. It is an opportunity to celebrate National Engineers Week. Watsonville has lots of wonderful engineers, and at this time, I'd like to share with you a video that was prepared by the city's outreach team recognizing Watsonville's engineering staff.
The world needs lots and lots of engineers.
These things that we work on and maintain impact our lives every day.
You've got artists that have visions and see things. You need someone to take those visions and make them reality.
What do our engineers work on? They work on our water systems. They're working on our sanitary sewer systems, working on our roadways. All of those things that we need on a daily basis, our engineers work on.
I really love what I do. To me, the best part is when it's done, you get to look at it and say, wow, that was a really positive impact on the community, and I got to be a part of it.
If you're a community-minded person, then engineering is an excellent career. It'll give you the opportunity to be part of a team, to help build things that will last.
There's a lot of new technology, a lot of different ways to do construction. So all of those things make engineering a really exciting field.
You can have a really rewarding career that really makes an impact on the world and the future.
When I go home at night, I can sleep because I know I've helped Watsonville to be a better place.
Very nice. Thank you for this lovely report and looking forward to egg drops. Do we have any other speakers from the public? Not at this time. So we will begin our oral communications from the council, and we'll begin with Councilwoman Kiros Carter.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything to report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll continue with Councilman Hurst.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. And I want to give a shout out to Mr. Fontz, our engineer Fontz, and all our engineering folks. You know, he likes to scramble his puns pretty well, but they're always well-baked. I want to wish everyone a pleasant post-presidents' day. Some people actually had the day off, and you know, even though I'm retired, I take a day off once in a while, but it wasn't yesterday. I was as busy as most people in the community and in the room, and we always have a bunch of busy people in this audience. The Measure Y Revenue Oversight Committee met recently, and I observed their good work and want to thank all those members for supporting our Measure Y efforts for public safety and education in the community. The downtown specific plan met as well, and there again, our partners in business in the downtown, our tenants and our shopkeepers and property owners participated more than usual, and that was good to see. We recently had a tour of the city facilities with our, hopefully, our new Congresswoman Lofgren. I participated in the pension funding strategy meeting, and hey, there was a retirement party for Ms. Maggie Ivey, who is the executive director of what's now called Visit Santa Cruz County, which used to be called the Santa Cruz Visitor and Conference Council. And we all know how important hospitality jobs are for our workforce and for all of us as well. Coming up, as Mr. Fontz indicated, the egg drop. We'll have a legislative meeting. Taco dinner is coming up. Women's History Month is coming up as well, and the RTC will be having an exciting meeting very soon.
Thank you.
Fairgrounds, let me finish, please.
Oh, come on.
I'm almost there.
Means I got to add to the public.
Fairgrounds, crab feed fundraiser coming up. You all support the fairgrounds.
Thank you.
National Ag Day, too.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Garcia, please take more time if you wish this time.
I don't think I need it. Good evening, everybody. I attended 10 meetings, both virtual and in person. If you remember, in 2017, Watsonville approved a GPA to establish the Monterey Community Powers. It is now known as Central Coast Community Energy because it has extended its operations all the way down to San Luis Obispo. At last week's board meeting, there had been on their agenda a proposal to amend the Community Advisory Council's bylaws to lessen their authority to recommend or make comments on any matters from the community. Watsonville had been a strong advocate of community input, so I was one of 24 that spoke against that amendment. Councilmember Vanessa, who's a director on the 3CE board, also spoke against it. The vote was a tie, so the motion failed. Instead, another motion authorized an ad hoc committee be created to resolve the conflict between staff recommendations and the Community Advisory Council. Perhaps Councilwoman Vanessa can give more details on what is going to, what that's going to look like in terms of what the ad hoc committee is going to be deciding. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Councilman Estrada?
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dutra?
Thank you, Mayor. So a few weeks ago, we had a cleanup on Streep's Lou. So I want to say thank you to everybody that came to it. We have our Trash Talkers, which is a group that's been going out for over a year, picking up trash along with PVPSA and the city of Watsonville. So I want to say thank you to everybody who participated. We had over 30 people show up, and we picked up 170 pounds worth of garbage. So, and there's a lot more out there. If you'd like to participate, it happens the second Tuesday of every single month. This next, this next location will be at the railroad tracks on a lonely parkway, so we'll be there on March 12. So you can join us because there's a lot of trash that we picked up in our community. I also want to say congrats to all the engineers. That sounds like a fun job, you know? You know how I am with infrastructure, so I'm always encouraging, you know, young people to get into the, and to become engineers so that they can help, you know, move our communities forward with our roads and our bridges and sidewalks and everything that we need to live. And I also wanted to bring up one other thing. This Friday, myself and the mayor belong to Metro, and we are having our election for the local Metro Board, and actually, one of the slates removes all South County representation. So I think it's really important that if people are, you know, we should be concerned that this is happening, and we need to make sure that Metro has our voices in all leadership positions, and that includes one of the seats on the RTC, which it has traditionally been held by a South County person, one of the three seats. So hopefully, that slate will not pass, but we do not want to see South County's voice be shut out, and hopefully, we could be, we could support the mayor and myself on that board and make sure that South County's voices are being represented. So thank you very much. That will be this Friday online. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dutra. Mayor Protem Montesino?
Thank you, Mayor. Just good evening, but I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. I think everybody's mentioned all that I would have. I'm going to put an exclamation point on what Councilman Dutra just said. We have Metro representation to the RTC, which is where the money's spent, and South County was on another slate is to be represented by a retired administrator from North County that doesn't represent us. So if you're interested in making sure that we are represented, you can tune into that. I know Councilwoman Dutra is headed to vice chair, which also in leadership and executive council then would also represent South County. They seem to forget about us, and that's just not the way it should be. So we're fighting very hard to make sure that they don't. A couple of weeks ago, we did give a tour to Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren. She spent the day here looking at our infrastructure and the needs of our infrastructure and the hundreds of millions of dollars we'd love for her to, you know, to help Jimmy Panetta spend here because it's going to be a unique year next year. Someone will represent us, and then Jimmy Panetta or whoever wins the race that he's entering in will represent everybody else in the 95076. So although we may not have wanted this, this is what we have, and we have now two congresspeople who are working towards the same goals. Because what's good for the city of Watsonville is good for the rest of 95076, especially when it comes for our water needs and infrastructure. And I want to thank staff for all the hard work everybody did to prepare for that. And thank you very much. Oh, wait. Thank you, engineers. Marie Esther? Thank you, Murray. Always when I know he's coming forward to have the look on his face, it's always fun. So I hope everybody attends, and if they want to enter, I think it's only kids that can enter, though. So if you're going to drop an egg, children only. I would have gone to report out of closed session, but I made you do that early. So thank you very much. And Erwin? If you would, can you queue up that? We have a mayor's proclamation tonight congratulating the Watsonville band on their 75th anniversary, which is tomorrow. And so we thought, since we couldn't have you with our mask the way they are, come and play for us now. We're certainly going to have, invite you back later. We thought we'd play a little video for the people at home, as well as the people here to see. I think this was your last concert, was it? In the holiday time? And there's some video that we'd like to have. So whenever you're ready, Erwin. Very nice. Can't wait to have it. You clearly have, clearly had a lot of attendance. So if I could have any representatives from the Watsonville band, come on up. That's how you roll. I totally understand. Not that we don't want to talk to these folks over there, but the camera's that way. So we will. So this is a proclamation to the Watsonville Community Band on your 75th anniversary, which is tomorrow, the February 23. And Watsonville Scots Band, is that what it was called?
Sciots.
Sciots Band, as it was originally known, held its first rehearsal in the Watsonville High Band Room in February of '47 with Ralph Slip Bonnet, is that his name, Bonnet? As conductor. Watsonville's community band's inaugural concert took place in the City Plaza on August 10, 1947. Was it in the bands?
I don't know.
Okay, trust me to ask the question, sorry. Whereas designated as the official representative of the California State Fair, the band performed in concert at Seattle's World's Fair, ooh, I didn't know that, and marched in the Seafair Parade, taking first place among more than 40 other bands. Whereas Watsonville Community Band performed at the International Convention of Lions Club in Chicago, marching down Michigan Avenue and being awarded the highest score of any participating band by professional judges. Wow, that's amazing. And during their first trip to Europe, Watsonville Community Band performed for U.S. military personnel in Mainz, Germany. In 1995, the band played for President Clinton at the dedication of the California State University Monterey Bay, formerly Ford Ork. And the Watsonville Community Band was bestowed the rare honor of performing Hail to the Chief, Announcing the President during the National Oceans Conference at Canary Row, Monterey. And Watsonville Community Band has remained active during the pandemic and is proud to be one of the few in the country that functions as both a marching and a concert band. Now, therefore, I are a Parker Mayor of the City of Watsonville and the State of California on behalf of the city council, hereby congratulate Watsonville Community Band on their 75th, that's just amazing to me, anniversary, and their continued efforts to showcase this art form worldwide, and wish for them to continue being part of our community for decades to come. And before I hand the microphone for some words, just want to say, the Watsonville Community Band has been here my entire life. And when I was a kid, I wanted to play in it, and then I realized I just didn't play the clarinet that well. At least from a kid point of view. And I thought, that's scary. But I followed you and the people that came before you when I was a kid, when you'd practice outdoors, take the dogs walking, and we'd just follow for blocks. And I know a lot of other people did, too. They came out and sat in their chairs, and they listened as they did. I just want to say thank you so much for helping Watsonville be the community it is because we couldn't be it without the Watsonville Band. And you, what's your?
I'm correct.
So you're the director. Brad?
Grundrus.
Grundrus. And you're the director. How long have you been the director? Hey.
What?
It happens to me all the time. I get corrected all the time. Okay? And I'd like to present this to you, and I'll give you the microphone first so you can make some comments.
That's dangerous.
There you go. That's dangerous. Hand me the mic.
Actually, what you want to watch out for is if I hand it to Gene over here, because I've been a member of the band for nearly 30 years, off and on, but over 25 now continuously. And what has been continuous for me, and has been, I know it's true, is the Watsonville Band exists and performs and loves doing it because we have the support of our community. We love to perform for, to share our music with our community, and we have always had the support of our city, and we're proud of that, too. You're one of the, I think you're the only city I know of that supports a band the way that, no one has a band like us. There's not a lot of bands like us, period.
Yes.
And it's interesting that as we, we've had generations go through the band, and, you know, people get older and they can't march anymore, but we're still a marching band, and we're proud of that fact. And we are proud to carry the Watsonville flag down every street we go to in Aptos or in Santa Cruz or in Monterey. It's, you're Washington, D.C., yeah, to have that American flag, the California flag, and the City of Watsonville flag.
You're taking a bit of Watsonville.
So you're making it, we're proud to do it, and we're proud that we're supported by our city. Now, I'm going to hand it to Gene. Because Gene has been a member of the band more than anybody else, longer than anybody else here, I think. And he's, that was long gone.
You said that two minutes.
There you go. But he's been a member of the band for most of the history of the band. So here we go, Gene.
Thank you. Somehow, I got a reputation for talking a lot when I get a microphone in my hands. So, hey, I didn't take it or anything. 56 years it has been. You know, when the founders got together before that very first rehearsal in February of 1947, their goal was a group that would shout Watsonville down the street wherever we went. And we have done that for 75 years, and along with Dana and everyone else here, I'm really proud to say that we continue to do that. That's a big, big part of our job. So thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council, for your continued support. That goes back most of our 75 years as well. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Gene. So I'm going to get this one out, and I don't know if anybody is taking a picture. We can... Back?
Oh, absolutely.
Actually...
With our instruments.
That's right.
We've done that before.
...made here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Poco, what was that date you needed us? See, May 1st.
May 1st.
We've had a little talk about it.
Get us times and dimes and activities. We'll be there.
I just wanted to share that the first time I was able to see this band was when I was five years old in 1952, at the Fourth of July Parade, was my first Fourth of July Parade. And every parade that has ever happened since then, I've been there to enjoy your music and applaud you for all that you do. And I say thank you.
I too want to just give my appreciation, my thanks to the band. You are Watsonville, you represent the community you have for a long time. And you know, I'm really, the first time I got to see you play was actually before the pandemic, really locked everything down. And you were practicing your, I don't know if I should give it away, but you know, I heard you. It was amazing. And you know, that's really why I extended the invitation to all of you for Nerdo. And hopefully, you guys can start making the, connecting the dots of how amazing that whole list, that whole thing you were working on. I just thought it was beautiful, it was remarkable. And I just thought it was sad that you, the community didn't get to hear that music. And so I'm really excited. Hopefully, you guys can make it there, May 1st, and we can hear that beautiful, beautiful music that you've given us for so many decades. So thank you.
Councilman Hearst?
I too want to salute the Watsonville Band a long, long history in Watsonville. And so what great representatives we have internationally, as well as nationally and locally. And so Gene Smith and I spent a lot of time together at Watsonville High School. And then all the band members are active participants in the community in so many, so many ways. Art Dover was our family physician and pediatrician for many years and helped preserve the health of our family. And so there's great community in the Watsonville Community Band. And I say happy 75. Thumbs up.
Any other comments from, okay. Thank you very much, Watsonville Band, for coming and representing. And once again, you will get another invitation to come play for us. All right. So we're going to be moving on to reports to council. We have a presentation on Cabrillo College Local Government Fellows Program by our esteemed Gail Pellerin, former Santa Cruz County Clerk, and Arnie Corsi. I don't want to mispronounce, please correct me. Cabrillo College alum. Welcome, Ms. Gail Pellerin.
Thank you so much. This is on or do I push a button? You're good. Anyway, my name's Gail Pellerin. Thank you, Mayor Parker and council members. It is so exciting to see you all in person. I was so thrilled to come down to Watsonville today, see Beatrice and Erwin as well. Thank you for having us here tonight. Yes, I was the county clerk for more than 27 years, working for county government, and spent seven years working for the state. And our future is in our young people's hands, as you have said. And I wonder how many young people are sitting at home tonight, watching this and thinking, maybe I want to be an engineer, or maybe I want to be mayor, or a council member, or a city clerk. And we have an avenue for them. As county clerk, I loved reaching out to our youth. We did a lot in the areas of speaking to students, registering students to vote, participated in the civic summit, and hired students to work in our office. And in the many years I've served, I personally saw the results of planting those seeds of civic engagement early. Young people ran for office. Young people found jobs in government. So the local government scholar, Fellows Scholarship Program will provide for support for students to pursue an education that can lead to a career in local government. There will be an emphasis on first-generation students. The program includes a $2,000 scholarship, a paid internship with a local government agency. And we're very grateful to our local city managers and our county administrative officer, who've agreed to make this possible. And then we're also going to be providing mentorship by a current or retired government leader. So we have set an ambitious goal for this program to raise a permanent endowment of $100,000. And this will support two fellows annually and perpetuity. And as of today, we've raised close to $47,000. We are so grateful to the individuals and the government agencies who have already donated to this program. And we're hopeful to add the City of Watsonville to our list tonight. So you may have heard the City of Capitola donated $10,000 to our Cabrillo Fellows Scholarship Program. And not to put any pressure on any of you, but you know, certainly any amount that the City of Watsonville could contribute would be greatly appreciated. And any of your listeners who would like to donate, we would love to have you be a part of this as well. So I want to turn it over to Arnie, who's actually the brains behind this fabulous idea. And he could share a little more information. And I think on our screen here, we have information on how to get.
Thank you, Gail. Mayor Parker and members of the Watsonville City Council, I'm Arnie Corsi. I do appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. I've spent about 30 years of my life going to city council meetings, including 18 years as a city manager in the City of San Mateo, as a native of Santa Cruz County. And my wife as well. We decided it was time to move back a few years ago. And I have the passion for local government and local service that Gail also shares. And being able to pull a number of current and retired local government leaders together to put together this fellowship program was something that I, you know, I thought would be a very good thing to do for the community. And for me, it all started at Cabrillo College. I didn't really have the grades when I got out of high school to go anyplace else. And there were few options. And so I went to Cabrillo. And really, the opportunity to learn at Cabrillo, to be stimulated, is what sent me on to receive my bachelor's degree, ultimately a master's in public administration and a career in local government. As local government leaders, you know how critical it is to have effective managers and leaders and council members. And this is one program that can help develop that. We know we've got to spark students' interest in local government, hard to do, given some of the other attractive professions that might be out there. But this is a way to make a start. So again, I appreciate you having us here this evening and appreciate your consideration to support this program. And also, I just appreciate the time that you, as city council members, put in in service to your community. It's a lot of work and it's a lot of sacrifice. So thank you very much.
Any questions? Councilwoman Garcia?
First a comment and then a question. The comment is, when Gail first approached me several months ago, I was so excited about this possibility in terms of supporting the first-generation students to find success in their life. And my question is to the city manager, what is the process that we would have to take in order to make a donation?
I think one avenue that the council can use is our annual social service grants allocation. So that is one process that you could consider. Or you could also direct staff to look for, you know, just other ways that we can fund it. And we will talk to our finance director to see what we can do. And bring it back for your consideration.
As one member of the council member, I will direct you to do that.
Do I have three more?
I will second that. I mean, this is a wonderful part, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go right ahead.
I think, you know, we need, you know, to encourage leaders and provide that avenue of leadership and just knowing and, you know, and awareness of, you know, the potential that the people can have. I think it's great. So I would second that. Find some funds to be able to put forward for donations.
Okay, Councilwoman Vanessa Girros Carter?
Yes, I would agree with that. I am a Cabrillo, a proud Cabrillo College former Seahawk. And I also, I know how important it is to receive scholarships like this. I was a scholarship recipient. And would I not have received scholarships, I would not have been able to attend my dream school of Berkeley. And I would love to find funds to be able to support this and support bright minds that are able to go on and do wonderful things. So thank you.
Tamara?
This item is not agendized for today's discussion. We will not be able to take formal action. But I appreciate the direction of the council. And we can come back at a future meeting and then agendize appropriately for discussion and take action. So thank you.
Let's just let you know, we're not going to take a vote on it. But we can speak to it. Councilman Dutra, would you like to speak to it?
Just going to say, thank you. What a great opportunity. I know that Arnie and I had talked about this last year. And I'm glad you guys finally got here and were able to give the presentation that you did. I think education is important. A lot of people would like to have that opportunity, but they feel that they don't have the means to get there. And this is going to offer that, especially in a community like Watsonville. So thank you for all the hard work.
Councilwoman Estrada?
Thank you, Mayor. So I see that the donations are through the foundation. So I imagine that that allows for some flexibility for students that may have DACA or not, they don't have status, but maybe are interested in pursuing an education program in politics. Would that allow for that flexibility?
A key partner in this venture is the Cabrillo College Foundation. And the emphasis on first members of family to go to school. You know, I'm not all that familiar with how the Cabrillo College Foundation is, but my understanding is they have quite a bit of flexibility and recognize that Cabrillo is a community that needs to serve, is a college that needs to serve the entire community.
Great, thank you. And then just to sort of, just to ask, you know, traditionally or historically, you know, politics has been sort of an office used to really marginalize and under-reserve people of color or other sort of historically marginalized groups. And so is there sort of an emphasis to really look for students that, you know, you know, there's a difference between somebody, a student that maybe had privilege, that had the resources to figure out, I want to go into politics. But what about the young people of color, LGBTQ+? A lot of people that sort of don't feel like they could be a part of the political system. Is there any effort to really, you know, in the name of equity, sort of work towards that?
Absolutely, that will be part of the focus, for sure.
Thank you. Those are my two questions.
All right, Councilman Hearst?
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Watsonville is so lucky to have an institution of this caliber right here in our downtown. And I was certainly fortunate to be on that council many, many years ago, which cleared the way for Cabrillo to be in our downtown. And thanks to redevelopment, which has expired, but we're glad to see that Cabrillo has not expired. And we say thank you very much and continue to be the gateway to success in our community. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming. It was great to see you and great to meet you, Arnie. And as you heard, we'll all follow through and make sure this appears on a future agenda so that we can move forward and support you monetarily as well as philosophically. All right? So thank you very much for bringing this to us.
Thank you so much.
Coming all the way down here to South County. All right. So now we move to the consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are the recommended actions, which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion. The mayor, that's me, will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. And we will move to that now. Is there anyone who would like to speak to any of the items on the consent agenda from the public? If you would approach the podium, state your name and where you live. Okey dokey. All right, I don't see anyone. So we will move to council. Council?
I'll second.
Okay, so it was a motion by Councilwoman Garcia. And who was the second? Councilwoman Dutra. All right, is there any discussion? I want to bring up something that's on here. It is 7G. 7G. And we are, it's a resolution appointing Kirby Harris as a non-voting member, public member of the Santa Cruz County Flood Control and Water Conservation District Zone 7 Board of Directors. And I wanted to state my appreciation for Kirby taking on this role, if the council so wishes to appoint. And we appreciate it as a public member attending those meetings and giving input as needed. All right. And with that, if there's no other questions or comments? Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
No on 7, aye, and yes to the others.
Hearst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Aye.
Girros Carter?
No on 7, aye, and yes to the others.
Parker? Yes. The motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We have no items removed from the consent agenda. So we will move on to public hearings, ordinances, and appeals. 9A, a public hearing to consider approval of Park in Lew and Parks impact fees. Nexus study will be continued to March 8. It was agendized originally, but it will be on, continued to our March 8, 2022 meeting. 9B, public hearing to consider major modification of Miles Lane to allow relocation of Building 5 to avoid overhead power lines across the property at 139 Miles Lane, has been postponed to a later city council meeting. You have a question?
Yeah, I got a question. Was that postponed on our end or their end?
There was an item missing for the presentation that will be coming to the council at a later date. Together, it was the consideration for the density bonus for affordable house, for affordable housing agreement. And staff is working with the applicant to bring that at the same time. So it will come at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to have complete information when they come. So we're going to move to new business and a consideration of comprehensive annual financial report recommended by Administrative Services Director Zerwin. And she's here. Hello, Cindy Zerwin. Okay, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, council members. It feels a little strange being at the podium. It's been a very long time, but happy to be here. And I'm here with my amazing Assistant Finance Director, who's going to be helping me with my presentation today. And I'm going to let her start. Marissa Duran, I should say your name.
Good evening, Mayor and council members and members of the public. My name is Marissa Duran, and I'm the Assistant Finance Director for the City of Watsonville. It is my pleasure to present you tonight a high-level review of our city's annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. As this slide shows, the city's overall net position increased by 8.2 million. Of that increase, the governmental activities increased by a total of 3.6 million. The key elements for this increase were sales tax. Thank you. To the tune of about 2 million and other minimal increases in other categories. We also had a one-time CARES grant for about $498,000 that helped us pay for some public safety response to the pandemic, as well as a one-time mutual aid receipt from Cal Fire in the amount of about $200,000 that helped pay for some fire overtime costs. We also had reduced spending. Business-type activities increased about 4.6 million. The key elements for this increase were increases for our charges in service, mostly in our water department. And also, they had decreasing capital spending, mostly due to the pandemic. This slide shows our increase in fund balance from 2020 to 2021. We saw an upwards of 1.6 million increase in our fund balance. million increase in our fund balance. So, we went from 16.6 in 2020 to 18.3 million. Again, this was largely due to steady increases in revenues and decreased spending. This chart shows our potential uses for our fund balance. We have our reserves, which also include our charter reserves of about 2.5 million, pension reserve, hospital contribution, capital needs that are budgeted out in the next couple of years. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Garcia?
The report that was given to us was very, very detailed, and I really appreciated it. I've limited myself to three questions. One, there's going to be an increase of 145,000 in property tax. Most is coming from property tax in lieu revenue. What is that?
If you'll, if you hold on one moment, Councilmember Brett Garcia. So, Marissa was presenting the annual comprehensive financial report, so the history of the fiscal year that ended in June, on June 30, 2021. I'm going to continue presenting about where we are in this fiscal year.
Okay. So, maybe I'll hold off my questions until the end.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other preliminary questions at this time? Okay. We'll turn it back to you.
I'm going to go ahead and then talk again about where we are sort of in the middle of this fiscal year 2020, 2022, or 2021, 2022. And just to be clear, that this data for most things is through February 1. For sales tax data, because of the timing and when we receive the data and the analysis, it's only through September 30, even though we call it the mid-year financial report. Overall, general fund revenues are over budget. Property tax is projected to be just slightly over budget. As Rebecca Garcia mentioned, it was about 145,000. The bulk of that was, is in some of our supplemental property tax categories, which would reflect the higher price of property turning over right now at the moment. Sales tax is projected to be 4.8% greater than last year and about $1 million over budget. I will dive into sales tax in one of the next slides. Utility tax is about where we expected it to be. And hotel tax is also on budget, and that reflects pre-pandemic receipts. The nice thing about, or I guess the interesting thing about that is, again, we've had two hotels come offline and are no longer serving the community as hotels, as you know. But the loss of the revenue from those two hotels is being more than made up by the Hampton Inn. That hotel is, at least from a tax perspective, you know, contributing nicely and helping make up for the loss of the other two hotels. Departmental revenues, in particular, CDD and FIRE will be over budget. CDD has sort of just been very, very busy this year. There have been a lot of building permits and projects happening in CDD. FIRE will be over budget due to strike teams, having strike teams out in most of August and September. Police and PCS will be, and Parks and Community Service will be slightly, slightly lower than their budgeted revenue projections. As I was mentioning, with sales tax, you can kind of see from all these wiggly lines, this is a history over the last three years. And almost all of our categories now are above pre-pandemic's levels, which is nice to see. They have recovered. You can see at the top there, though, auto and transportation and state and county pools are kind of taking a little bit dip. So, auto and transportation, we're not sure if that is simply related to sort of supply chain issues, you know, and our dealerships just simply not having vehicles to sell right now, or if that's going to be just a leveling off. We're not sure. We'll take time. We'll tell. In terms of state and county pools, I think, if you recall, we discussed that this would happen, that after the pandemic, after tourism and online, and in-person shopping sort of return to some of our county neighbors, that we would likely see a drop back in that line item. And you could see that pretty dramatically here. So, the blue line is kind of our share of the county pool. And you can see it literally is back to where it was pre-pandemic, hovering around 21%. Where, and during the recession, during the pandemic, we did get all the way up to 23, almost 24% of the county pool. Again, that is, it's based, how much percent of the county pool you get is based on brick and mortar sales in your municipality. And so, that is leveling back off just as we had expected. So, this is a summary of general fund revenues, sort of what I just discussed. In total, we are expecting we will have general fund revenues about $1.2 million better than budget. On the expenditure side, the Fire Department has increases in overtime, doing, mainly dealing with the strike teams and helping out in August and September. They've also been backfilling for turnover in vacant positions, so that has stabilized in the last about month or so. They are also dealing with increased fuel and vehicle repair costs. So, they are asking for a $660,000 appropriation, and that is much of it backed by that additional revenue that I was discussing earlier, where they're getting reimbursed for the time that they spent out on strike teams in the fall. The police are also dealing with increased fuel and vehicle repair costs. They are able to absorb some of that increase within their own budgetary savings by not spending on line items and also through some vacancy and turnover that they had, but they're not able to absorb the entire increase. And I will, I expect that they're going to need about $100,000 to pay for fuel costs, increased in fuel costs this fiscal year. Community development, as I mentioned, is very busy, very, very busy lately. So, they're requesting a couple of little things to just help their operations run smoother. So, one is that they are requesting to move half of a planning position back into the general fund, which had been moved into some housing work, but there's not, there's too much general fund work for them to stay there. They're also requesting some money to be able to purchase some equipment and some furniture for the department and for their staff. And for that, they're requesting to use some cannabis fund balance that they have. Public Works on the general fund side is asking for some money in a couple of different areas. One is, there's a one-time cost, Caltrans is revising sort of a cost-sharing agreement that they had on PG&E costs along Main Street intersection. So, it's like our share of a streetlight where one of the railways might be ours and two directions might be theirs. They are asking to go back basically five years and help pay interrears for some PG&E class that they did not charge us, so for $997,000. They are also asking for some increase in custodial and building maintenance, both just due to COVID and having to do a lot more cleaning and maintaining than was maybe previously done. And then also just the age of the buildings. We're realizing we need to spend a lot more in our sort of basic maintenance to hopefully avoid major capital costs in the future. So, they're asking for $74,000. We're also asking for $74,000 for maintenance of sloughs and trails. My department is asking for $66,000. So, I am working with some consultants right now to both redo our cost allocation plan and develop some strategies for managing our CalPERS liability. So, a combination of those two needs exceeds my current budget by $66,000. And then the Parks and Community Services Department is actually not asking for anything. They are actually anticipated to have some savings due to sort of a slower expected start, restart of the programs in the fall and in the summer, and then also just some turnover in their department, but they are hoping to be at full capacity come the next spring and summer. So, as you can see here, a summary is that the general fund on the operating side is expected to be over budget by about $960,000. Capital will have savings projects that won't be completed this year, but we will likely roll them forward to next year. So, all that told, you can see at the bottom there, we're expecting to have a year-end change to fund balance of about 2.2 million, though again, about 2 million of that will be carried forward. So, our expected year-end change to fund balance overall is going to be pretty minimal. The overage that we're having in revenue is going to cover the overage in the expenditures that we're seeing. On the enterprise funds, the airport was pretty conservative on their budget, both revenues and expenditures. And so, they're requesting to use that excess revenue to pay for increases in, again, fuel costs. This is where we're seeing inflation hitting our budget more than anywhere else. And then also some increased legal costs. The utility funds are pretty stable this year. It's very exciting. We're actually, we've just received last week a grant from the state that's going to help pay for the aging water account balances. I think you've heard about this program from the department before. And we're hoping to get a similar grant to pay for wastewater. They're asking for another utility worker to help deal with graffiti that we've seen around town at an increased level. And they're also requesting a senior environmental project analyst to work on the city's climate action plan and environmental sustainability projects. We have two internal service funds. Well, actually, we have more than that, but two, two that I want to talk about today. So, one is information technology, and that department has been going through a lot of transition and growth, including consolidating positions from other departments back into a sort of a centralized IT department. They are requesting two additional IT analyst positions, and they will be paid for by Public Works. And the library, an internal service fund, is a fund that gets funding from other departments. And then MSC, the vehicle shop, again, is really dealing with the cost of vehicle and fuel inflation. And so, they're requesting $570,000 across those two categories, both parts and fuel. And that, again, is going to be shared cost with other departments, which other departments, for example, solid waste and water and the other utilities, they're going to be able to absorb that within their operating budget, which is why you're not seeing that full amount of request coming from other departments. And then one of today's actions is for you to accept the Measure G audit report. So, the highlights of the Measure G audit are, again, that we passed the audit with clean, clean, no findings. Our reserves are exceeding the 10% reserved level, and we have more than exceeded the maintenance of effort requirements. So, with that, your actions that I'm asking of you today are to accept the annual comprehensive financial report by motion, accept the mid-year financial report, accept the Measure G annual audit report, and to, I apologize, Measure Y, everyone is correcting me, habits, approve a resolution appropriating $2.5 million, including four positions, as outlined in the attachment that was included with the staff report. About any questions?
We'll go to Councilwoman Garcia at this time.
Okay. And my questions are based mainly on the report that you gave us, which may or may not match what you just, okay. So, my first question was in terms of, I just wanted to know, what is the definition of property tax in lieu revenues?
The property tax in lieu revenues is a thing that some California governor did, I think in 2014, where previously cities were able to get vehicle, we got vehicle license fees, and the state decided to take that back and include that in state's general fund monies. And in lieu of that, they started giving us an additional share of property tax. And so, we got, we have an additional share of property tax based on that sort of revenue swap that I don't remember which governor did, and I believe it was in 2014. But that revenue now floats on our property tax assessed value increases each year rather than the cost of a vehicle license, which I'm guessing that governor at that point thought that vehicle license revenue would increase greater than property taxes, so they figured they were making money off of it.
I kind of remember that. Yeah. Okay. My next question is, there's a $10,500 increase for city council. Why is that?
That is, it was a mistake of mine. I was remiss to not re-increase the council member's travel and events budget back up to its previous, pre-pandemic $3,000 level in the budget plan this year, even though we had restored, you know, much of other departments pre-pandemic. And so, I am trying to correct that error by allowing each council member to go back to their pre-pandemic level of travel and event budget to $3,000 instead of what was reduced during the pandemic to be $1,500.
I don't remember that we got that much, but if you say we did, I guess we did. Okay. And finally, the funding increases that you proposed were for departments. What is the process for council members to ask for other increases in the general fund? For example, I have talked to at least two council members that believe we really need to have some funding for warming centers for our homeless. How do we make that request?
Usually, the mid-year report, and again, you're council and you can appropriate whenever you would like. Normally, larger policy changes like that are what happen during the budget process. So, it is good for me to hear that from you right now, because that will be something we will talk about then in the budget process. Normally, in my mid-year report, what I try to do is, is sort of show costs, all things being equal, if we keep operating as we have, this is what it will cost to continue the rest of the year. That being said, the council has sole appropriation authority and can make appropriations whenever you want.
Okay. Thank you.
As long as there's money to pay for them.
And it's passed by council?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Are there any other clarifying questions? Mayor Protem, Montesino?
Yeah. You talked about, you know, an overall increase in few different departments. And do we have a contract with a fueling company, or do we just pay market rate, you know, fluctuation?
We do have a contract. We do have a contract for fuel. That contract is actually coming due, and I think you'll be seeing a proposal to RFP or to go out for that shortly. Correct, Marissa?
Yeah. I believe it was in a recent agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. And also had another question on the, if you go over one of the slides in the Fire Department, I didn't understand, so there's a variance of, they're asking 600, something, 600,000. And you said it's because of the state that we're having, so are we going to get that money back?
That's not that slide. There was a previous slide.
Oh, yeah.
Talking about the strike.
So...
There it is.
Yes.
660,000 request.
Again, so, they're requesting $660,000 of that. The bulk of it is going for overtime, but not all of their overtime costs are related to the strike teams, right? Some of that is also them backfilling for their own vacancies that they've had this fiscal year. So, we are expecting to get $484,000 in extra revenue, which is, again, paying for the bulk of their overtime request. There's, they're also asking, within that 660, for $24,000 for fuel and $56,000 for vehicle maintenance. So, that, of that 660, 580 is overtime, and of that 580 of overtime, 484 is going to be paid for through the strike team program.
So, your next slide is on, should be, if we get the 484 back, should be 100 and change? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, goes the other way. So, of that, that 660, 484 is paying for it.
Yeah, but our cost, if we get 484 back, our cost is 180 or whatever, you know, I'm not doing the math.
Our cost of overtime is about $100,000.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. 176. Any other clarifying questions before we go to the public? All right. I'll open it to the public now. Are there any public comments over these reports? You'd approach and say your name and where you live. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Carolina Moreno from District 5. Also, very good to see you all in person. It's been a while. And I just wanted to ask, before you vote to accept these recommended appropriations, I ask that you... I ask that you take a minute to look at item number 26 and possibly pull it, where the airport is asking for $420,000 for legal fees. Because as a community member, you know, I would like to request a presentation be made and be put together for the community. $420,000 is a lot of money on top of the $710,000 that they're already getting, and especially because that is, you know, almost equal to the entire budget that the library gets for an entire year. And, you know, I would rather, as a community member, like to see that money go to the library or to Parks and Rec. And also because, you know, going back to the city's charter, section 1107, which states that no officer, department, or agency of the city shall during any fiscal year expand or incur any budget as amended for a given classification or expediture. And yeah, that's almost equal to what the Parks and Rec is getting for legal fees. Do you know what I mean? So I would like to see that money instead go towards the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments from the public? Welcome.
Well, good evening. Yeah, it's good. I think this is my first time stepping foot in the Watsonville City Council, right? So good evening. It's good to see you finally by faces, right? So.
You go ahead and state your name.
My name is Bernie Gomez, District One, I believe, right across the street, right, with Milpa. So in this $100,000 for an increase, and I understand the whole, you know, gas, everybody's paying more for gas, right? You know, everything's inflation, all that. But one thing that just comes to mind every time that I see the police department, you know, always requesting for more funds is just, you know, how is it that this department that's already taking close to 50%, right, of, of the general fund, on top of that, you know, just even looking at Measure Y, is taking 52, 54% of Measure Y, right? While fire takes like 30, you know, parks take eight, I believe. You know, it's always just asking for more and more and more. So it's like, you know, I just, I don't understand. So I would like for the city council to like really look into that, you know, and just think about, it's like, well, what's going on? You know, it's like, if anything, you know, the fire department really, you know, they're actually bringing in some revenue, right? Or, you know, actually having the strike force, you know, doing work, but recognizing that this police department, it really doesn't bring in revenue, right? It's always kind of, you know, just, it's taking, right? And I'm not here just, you know, to bash on the police or the department, it's really like just financial means, like just the economics, right? So I don't have no much more to say, but I'll use my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie. Is there, are there any other folks from the public? Welcome. State your name, if you would, and let us know where you live.
Yeah, hi, my name is Ellie. I'm from District Seven.
Ellie.
So I just want to amplify what Karina and Bernie said. I agree and support both of them. I think that the police department takes so much money that it's hard to understand why they always need more. We just had a recent presentation on cameras that they needed as well. So it just, from a budgetary point, like, I would like a presentation to understand how they're managing their money and why we're constantly having this conversation that they need more. And then you guys find it and take it from other places that really need it, right? I don't agree that the library should pay for any other position unless it's directly involved with the library, because they already have such little money as it is. They have 1% of the fund. So I think that that's a little like, give them more money, give the library and parks more money. The two departments that need it the most are the ones that are making do with the very little that they have. And the department that gets the most money is like, please give me more. Like, that's not equitable. You know what I'm saying? And I do want to comment on the sales tax that we're seeing dipping again, and we saw an increase in 2020. It was because we couldn't go anywhere. Everything was shut down, and we had to stay locally. And if anything, that should give you a snapshot, that people have money to spend. But when Watsonville, when the, everything opened back up, people can leave Watsonville, then we're spending our money somewhere else. And we recently had a meeting for the downtown specific plan, and everyone was really focused on Salinas and how Salinas has really revitalized itself downtown and how we should be more like Salinas. But the, the thing that no one is talking about is that Salinas has a nightlife. We don't. I can leave my house at 9:00 PM and know that I can be out at Salinas for a good time, spending my money out there. So I think that that's another conversation that we really need to look into, and we can see the data right here, that the sales tax is leaving because we're leaving, because we have nothing to do here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Any other speakers? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Yasanya, and I live in District Seven.
Thank you.
So I just want to echo everything they said. Same thing with like, I don't think we should be paying for a lot of the legal fees for the airport. I also agree that there's like nothing to do here at nighttime, or like not as many places are openly, like, there is, but it's like not, it's like a lot of the bars are for like older people, or like, it's just like not our vibe. And I would also like, wish there was more things to do, like, outside of drinking as well, like arcades, something cool, something fun, something for families to do. I'm also a little bit skeptical of the police budget in terms of like fuel and like cars. Sometimes I see multiple cars at one location for something small. For example, I work on a school's campus, and for one student, there was two cop cars pulled up, and I didn't understand why that was necessary when it's just a kid, like, but I'm not going to get into that. And it's not like uncommon for you to see like three, four cars pull up to something, and yet they're complaining about fuel. I do understand when it's like a higher risk situation, but I do think that maybe if they had less money to work with, then they could budget out that stuff a little bit better. I also am just skeptical, because I've had personal situations, or have friends that have had personal situations where the cops don't handle things, as well as they could have, for example, one of my students who was in the Climate Corps Leadership Institute that a lot of you guys love to have photo ops with, he was framed, and he doesn't want to come out and speak about it because of fear of retaliation. So I just think it's interesting that you can put a hoodie on a kid, and then the case gets thrown out of juvie, because the original description was for a six-foot person, and my student is 5'5". So that's the personal reason that I have to have distrust for police, apart from stuff with like family. Thank you.
Thank you, Yasanya. Is there, are there any other public speakers? Okay. We're going to come back to council, but before we do that, can I ask Cindy, can I ask you to clarify a couple different things? We're talking about money, and I think for everybody in the public, it'll be helpful. Number one, if you would clarify the airport, because the airport is a separate, and I think you can explain it better than I can. It's a separate enterprise.
Yes.
Zone, and, and then Measure Y funding and the application of the percentages? And that's what the people passed in a measure, so that's not something that we can, okay.
So you're exactly right, Mayor. The airport is what is considered an enterprise fund, which basically operates as its own business. So the airport spends money that it makes within the airport, and that money cannot be spent anywhere else in the city. So the airport's revenues right now are from essentially land leases on airport property and from fuel, because they also sell fuel to people who come to the airport and fly and buy fuel at the airport. And there's a, there's a margin of profit that the airport earns from that, and that is how they fund their operations. So the money they make from those two sources of revenue cannot be spent on anything other than airport-related expenses. So the airport is making money, and they are spending that money, and they're paying for their own legal costs.
So then in regards to the seven, the legal fees, that's legal fees that that enterprise fund incurred?
Yes.
And it will be paid for by enterprise fund monies?
Exactly.
So even there's an increase on it, or what they're asking for, the allocation can only come from that fund. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so it's not being taken away from anything else?
Absolutely not, and it is being paid for by their own revenues, and we can, legally cannot spend those revenues on things like the library, or the Parks and Community Services, or police, or anything else. It is its own business enterprise. It is self-sustaining.
Okay. And then Measure Y?
Yes. Measure Y is, again, by voters, allocated 8% to Parks and Community Services, 38% to the fire department, and 54% to the police department. Those percentages were set by voters with the approval of Measure Y in March of 2020. And as you see, it gets its own special audit report based on the need for us to make sure that we are spending according to the percentages and provisions set out by the voters. And we cannot change that except for an act by the voters one more time.
So if one of those groups spent more or wanted to spend more, there's a cutoff point?
There is.
Okay. And the only way that that can change is if the voters change it?
Exactly.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that information. Any questions? Councilwoman Kidos Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a clarifying question about the, I believe it was the IT position that would be partially paid for by the library fund. Will the library have access to that position? Will they be like sharing that IT person, or?
This, this is, I'm happy to answer. This is a position that has traditionally been at the library, has been a general fund-funded position, and the budget is currently reflected in the budget, in the library budget, but we've been working with our IT department to centralize it and allow it for better support of all city departments. So functionally, it will be the FTE, the full-time position, will be under the IT department, and it will be serving the library as, as it had in the past. So it's, it's just centralizing where the reporting authority, just making sure that that IT professional is supported by the IT department and other members of the team for proper backup and all that. But, but in essence, it will continue to support IT needs of the library.
Okay, thank you. But it will still be taken from that library fund, correct?
Yeah, because it's a general fund, and that is where the, the funding currently exists, yes.
From the general fund.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
Supported and works under IT, but focuses their professional services on the library.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor, for clarifying that.
I'm sorry, I just, for me. Mayor Protem Montesino?
Yeah. Going back, going back to the fire department, so we're, we're spending, you know, a little bit of overtime, is, do we have a plan in action? Because I know we always have issues with overtime. Do we have a plan in action to be able to work on, you know, work on that issue over time?
I will say that this year, the, the, the fire department has had a number of vacancies, and they have had some difficulty filling, people going through academy and then not necessarily making it. And some worker, there's one person out on workers' comp, I believe, right now. But I will say, I, I track their overtime by pay period, and I send Rudy every pay period. It's Rudy, where's your overtime at? And I have to say, the last two pay, pay periods, they have actually had less overtime than they have had since 2019. So Rudy is doing a good job and making headway, and as soon as we get people hired, that, those overtime numbers do, do drop. And I know they're starting another academy very shortly.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Garcia?
This is to follow up on Eduardo's question. You mentioned that the fire department assisted with massive fires in August and Septembers, and I know that we get reimbursed for that assistance. Does that reimbursements cover the overtime that is associated with that?
It covers the overtime and even a little bit of administrative and fuel costs for the time that those strike teams are out. So again, it is covering the bulk of the overtime costs, but there is additional overtime this year that is not covered by that revenue, simply because they've had other turnover and overtime-related issues that are not related to the strike teams. But when they do send out on strike teams, it does cover the cost of that effort.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions from council? All right. Oh, Councilman Hurst.
No, no questions from me, just I'd like to move the statutory recommendation resolution.
Okay, so.
And of course, I'll have a comment.
All right. That's a motion, accepting the annual comprehensive financial report. Motion accept, you're talking about all motions at the same time? Accepting the mid-year financial report, motion accepting annual Measure G audit report, and a resolution amending the, what, financial year, 2021, 2022 budget? And we have a.
Second.
Yes. I don't know if we could do all that at once.
I just wanted to make a correction. I believe it's Measure Y audit report.
Oh, you are correct. Sorry, Cindy corrected that at the beginning.
And thank you, Madam Mayor, for restating the motion.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion from Councilman Hurst, and a second from Mayor Protem Montesino. Are there any comments? Councilman Duda?
Thank you. You said earlier, I have a quick question. You said earlier that two hotels are no longer collecting the tax revenue. Which two hotels are they?
It is the Comfort Inn and the roadway.
Okay, I knew roadway wasn't, okay, so Comfort Inn is no longer renting rooms?
The Comfort was taken offline for quarantine purposes, and it has not, it has not, I think it's currently vacant, I don't, it has not continued to serve the public.
During, during the COVID pandemic, it served as a shelter for elderly individuals that were houseless, and now it's undergoing renovations after serving for that purpose for over a year and a half, so it's currently closed.
What will it come back as? If it's getting renovated?
It's been, the rooms are being renovated, and I'm not sure about the timeline as to when it would come back online for regular hotel operations.
Were you asking whether it was going to be a Comfort Inn still?
What is it going to be? You can email me that information later.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
That's the one on Freedom Boulevard?
Airport.
Airport Boulevard, yeah.
And then, do we have any future plans for future hotels coming in that will, maybe it seems like that's a good revenue builder, so do we have any in the, in the pipes? I know we have a few people.
Not, not at the moment that I know of in the pipeline, like in the very near future, not, not yet.
Thank you.
Off on that, the Hampton Inn, you said, has really done well, better than projections, but what, because I know you project things.
I do project things. You know, I, I really wasn't sure what to expect from, from the Hampton. But, but all of our hotels right now, our last quarter worth of sales of hotel tax revenue, like I said, were again equal to or above our pre-pandemic levels. So it just is a good sign that things are coming back, and the Hampton, and they've only reported two quarter, or only a couple quarters now, so we're, I'm still sort of just kind of feeling them out a little bit, I guess.
Okay. Councilman Hurst?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just for the, the public record, I, I think it's important to remember that it wasn't too long ago that the city faced a lot of very difficult financial circumstances, and we had to make significant cuts and freezes and reductions in services. And now some of those things kind of come home to roost, and we have to make up for what we didn't have at that time. It's, it's like everybody's home, you know, eventually things do wear out, and you have to be replaced and fixed. So knowing that, I think we should be as benevolent and as generous as we possibly can, and we need to have a lot of questions about the budget, and I hope we'll, you know, continue to monitor it and get more questions about the budget. But let's face it, nothing gets cheaper, nothing is free, and that if, if we want to support the economy of this community, we do need to shop locally, and, and we need to pay our taxes, and we need to keep our property in good shape. And if we do those things, and we have the cooperation of the public. And if we do those things and we have the cooperation of the public and, in, in many respects and, and good stewardship, I think that we'll be in much better shape than we were in the past. But let's, don't forget, the state gives and the state can take away and we did have tremendous clawbacks and, uh, reductions in, uh, past decades. So I think we're on the right track, let's stay on the right track. Thank you.
Um, Mayor Protem Montesino?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I concur with, um, Councilwoman Hurst that, you know, uh, we face some, um, difficult times. I remember in my first coun, uh, council term, I mean, uh, um, our cop cars were falling apart, they were all over 200,000 miles. Um, the, uh, you know, the fire department, uh, you know, had, you know, apparatuses that were barely running. Um, so we, and, you know, and we didn't have the personnel for e, eh, any department, you know? So it's great to see, uh, come back in council where we, we were able to invest in our community. And, you know, I also like to acknowledge is tho, those people that spoke out and, and que, and questioned us, because we do, do need that stuff. Um, we do, we, um, but it's those kind of questions and so you can get your, your answers. Um, but it's, we need to have public safety. We need to be, to be able to attract those restaurants, to be able to have a nightlife, we need to make it safe in our community, we need, so, uh, we, uh, I'd like to acknowledge that we need to move forward on some of that's, uh, some of those ideas, but we, but we need to all work together for a better community. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, I, I want to acknowledge the speakers, because I think all of those questions were great questions. That led me to ask the questions I asked about the enterprise zone and as about measure Y, because there's so many rules of government that, uh, I, I still don't know and I've been doing it for a little while now. And so Cindy's been great about educating, she's very open with her numbers, how things go, what can be changed and what can't be changed. And maybe we can do some, I know that's a terrible thing to ask, some public workshops just on, you know, how it works and, and where funding can be taken, because it looks like it, things are being taken from one thing to another, but once again, with the explanation of that, um, and knowing it's self-contained in the airport, they have to make it to spend it, right? So, um, and I'm sure they didn't want to spend it that way, but that's the way it ended up, right? And, and, uh, so that's just good information, so I appreciated that. I appreciated that greatly and, um, we'll go to, uh, Rokol. Dutra?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Garcia?
Yes.
Hurst?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Kiroz Carter?
Yes.
Parker? Yes. The motion carries. With that motion carrying, um, we will look to one of the shortest meetings on record, looking at staff. Emergency items added to the agenda, there are none. Uh, we had requests on scheduling a future agenda item that was presented tonight and staff has that and we'll add that to our future minutes and we'll look into it financially. And, uh, without further ado then, I'm going to get to use the gavel, oh.
Uh, Mayor, regarding, uh, future agenda items, uh, there is a, uh, an initiative that's, uh, qualified for the ballot, I understand, or maybe it's in the process. And it's a transportation, uh, related, uh, initiative. And, and my concern is that it could have very serious effects, uh, for the city of Watsonville and our residents in the Paro Valley. And we don't know all that much about it, but I think we should have some kind of weigh-in about it and then, and an up or down, uh, vote. Could we have that on our next, uh, agenda?
What, what are we speaking of?
Uh, we're talking about the Green Way Initiative.
I thought there was a measure that's out there that's already, people will vote for it or not.
Yes, I'm just asking that we, uh, you have an, have an opinion on that as other municipalities and other agencies have.
But we can look at that?
If we could have that on our agenda.
Before, before, that would be, uh, that's in June, are they in June?
I, I'm not sure when they are bringing it to, to.
I think it's in June, so.
But I think, but because of its, uh, it is controversial and I understand not everybody might want to take a stand one way or another, but I think for the benefit of the Paro Valley and our residents in Watsonville, that we need to ma, make our, make our commitment known one way or another.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's a huge stand we need to take on this, but before June, you know, the, if we can work that into something, that'd be great.
I think we should weigh in, uh, at our next meeting if we can.
I don't think, I think our next meeting is going to be the, the opposite of this meeting and it's already, uh, completely planned out as far as I, I can tell. So we'll, we'll get it in there and I'm not going to push it till June or May, but we'll get it in there in the future, okay?
It'll be spring soon enough.
Yes. And with that, um, this is adjournment, get to use the, the gavel. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.